All right, opening up this meeting, third day, ready to go. I'll ask our clerk to do a roll call.
Counselor Teshu, Counselor Taylor.
I'm here.
Counselor Vega is absent, Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent, Counselor Sanigot.
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown, absent, Counselor Recupero.
Here.
Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent, and Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
The members present, you have a call.
All right, Mr. City Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counsel, for having us for a third night. Mr. Mason?
Yes, once again, thank you again for having us again this evening. The honorable counselors and two.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay, great, my voice will be music to your ears, hopefully. Yes, so tonight, we begin the last final night of the budget hearings. And tonight, you'll see that we have a schedule once again in front of you, but there's been some adjustments. So what you'll see on the screen, if you can see it from your seats, and those that may be watching virtually, we have removed two segments, which would be for the opera reporting and the 3-1-1 update, or resident responsiveness, and we will go right into the city manager from after legislative budget update, and we'll start off with the city and parking clerk, and then we'll end this evening with the auditor. Mr. Dunn will come up and we'll talk about the auditing department along with so many other budget line items, such as debt service, budget reserve funds, inter-fund transfers, regional schools, retirement contributions, and state assessments. I will now hand it over to my colleague, Mrs. Devon Fields, Deputy City Manager of Operations.
Thank you, Michael. Hi, it is my pleasure this evening to introduce your city clerk, Ms. Jeanette Centron White, to introduce her budget this evening, which you can find on page 107 of your budget book.
Good evening. Good evening. So you guys already, you're all familiar with my office. We handle the dog licenses, census, business certificates, withdrawals, vitals, minutes, agendas, elections, and campaign finance, zoning decisions. There hasn't been. Some of my accomplishments. Some of my accomplishments within the last year, as you can see, we hired Spanish-speaking interpreters for the first time in November. We actually did so in March, and it's something that we're going to continue to do moving forward. It worked out really well, and there was one at each polling location. I think all of you have met Gabby, and she is the new Assistant City Clerk when Patty retired. I'm so grateful that I have an elections administrator now, and I think you're all familiar with him since last year. And with him and some of the increases in our budgets, we were able to do some promotional items, just even the feather flags, we put them out during early voting here at the polling locations. We have more signage, like the sandwich boards. He has brought more awareness with, he was at National Night Out with the, for the voter drive, and then we did some recruitment sessions at like 14 Bloomingdale Carter Ave, the 260 Carter Ave building. And it's just that exposure of having him leave the office and just explaining election processes and trying to recruit poll workers, which I know you all know is difficult to do. We also onboarded poll workers, so they used to be more like a vendor, so it was, they are still a flat rate, but by onboarding them, now they're part-time employees who are inactive during the off-season. They have an I-9, and that was Jimmy headed that with HR and payroll with Treasurer's Office. We also offer now notary services to the public, so we have two notaries. So Jimmy and Gabby, the Assistant City Clerk and the elections person, if someone comes through the window within our guy lines, we offer that now, it was something that we didn't really offer before. And we did do the fillable census, which is nice, so if you lost your form, you can go online, fill it in, print it out, and return it to us. And then moving forward, we had just some small things that to do, well, we're going to continue the work, which is the digitalizing all our records, we're kind of doing it little by little in-house. And don't, you wouldn't, I don't want you to be surprised, but in the next CIP, I will be asking to do that again for the archiving more of our records. Last time, I had $20,000, and I was able to get your records from 1989 to 2017 done. And we're just going to continue the work with Jimmy in as far as elections.
Any questions, counselors?
We'll start with Counselor Sanigot.
Hi. Thanks for all you do, I know how busy you are. I just was wondering about your overtime line item, just because it's pretty inconsistent. So if you could explain a little.
So overtime tends to be when we have early voting. So we'll have staff stay, we have to be here, we're required to be here Saturdays, nine to five, for last day to register to vote. So that's typically all hands on deck for elections.
Okay. I was just looking at what the actual was in 2023, and then what you've proposed for 2025, and neither of those are election years, so it just seemed like you had much more overtime in 2023 than you are proposing for 2025, so.
So part of that is, so Carmen, who's been there the longest, she will assist with parking. So when we do the renewals for parking, because she's one of, so each person that applies, we run them at the registry, and not everyone can have that access. And so when we do the onlines, she really does help that part of the office and will assist Elsa and I with the online applications, and just, she just saves the extra time. So it's like having a third one of us to run and process, and she's always willing to stay.
And she's streamlined, so you don't need as much, and you have an assistant now, which is why.
Well, so election for Jimmy, he really doesn't do parking, he does, he does help in the office, but he's still new. So we, he doesn't, hasn't really done parking.
It was more if you needed more, just because it's so much less than two years ago. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
No questions.
Counselor Jimenez, okay, this side, Counselor Recupero?
I got a question. Over here, we, yeah, going back, I don't know how to say it. How was, over here, you've got so many dogs. He got, went for the dog violence increase, that means we got that many dogs in the city of Chelsea? The ones that are spayed, that you pay less money? So each year, the increase of dogs going up or down?
No, it's been the same for as long as I've been in my department. It's, if it's something you want to review, we can, but the rate has not, the amount has not changed. But what did increase is really the effort in our office to send out renewals, to process the mail that's returned, to do some, a little bit of outreach. We work, we share a file with the animal control officer to keep him in the loop of what's active, what's past renewal, we send out a second notice, and we started, so it might, this might contribute to it as well. I think a year or two ago, I implemented a late fee for dog licenses, and I think that really is what motivated people to do it on time.
We have a lot of dogs.
Right now, we're at about 600, we're at about 600 licenses, and we did send out a notice of a second, second late notice to residents.
What is conference travel, do you go traveling?
No, so we have, we do have conferences, and there's some trainings that we go to, so the state will offer it for elections, especially with election law changes. And for example, we did increase it because I do have two new people, and so Gabby and Jimmy, the elections administrator and the assistant, there is a city clerks conference, there's also changes to the vital records, it's going to change, they're changing their system over to, it's called Maverick. So there's going to be training coming up, and so I just want to, with the new employees, to strengthen the team and be able to send both of them.
That's why I doubled from 200 to 500?
All right, thank you, Counselor, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Welcome, thank you for what you do for the city, we appreciate it. So I have a couple things here. The first thing, let me start with the voting machines. We've, we've proposed $24,420 for voting machines, that's, that's, that's an increase of 144%. Give me the skinny on the voting machines, please.
So it shouldn't say voting machines, it's voting equipment.
So this was part of the CIP process, right, but there's some CIP projects that are funded through the operating budget. But yes, I think it was the.
We need.
The actual tablets, right?
So this is, so in CIP, I submitted for poll books, so I was approved for poll books in 2019, but when COVID happened, so it wasn't approved until 2020, one of my, we weren't back in the office, one of the parking enforcement vehicles broke down, it was much too old, I think it was a 1990 Astro van. So I got the approval from council to transfer that money over to purchase a new vehicle, and that was in 2020. And so I'm just asking for, I, it's, I'm asking for it again to actually use it on poll books.
Sorry, just, sorry, refresh my memory, the voting equipment is the, is the, is the voting books?
No, so poll books.
Or the, or the, or the stands that people stand in?
No, no, so two different things, so that, so it says voting machines, but there's two things. I need voting booths to replace just some of the, from wear and tear, what we have at the polling locations. And the poll books are, so they're not approved by the state and to use them in an election, they really serve the purpose of, so for example, you come to do early voting here at the window, instead of you having to write everything out, this, I would check you in, and a label would come out with your name, address, and there's no issue with your writing your name and trying to figure out what you wrote. It's just, it is a convenient thing to have, and it would help us, it's just a cleaner way of doing things. And then if the state approved it, to use it as a check-in process on election day, then that would be great. But as of right now, it really is.
But what's the, I'm sorry, what's the purpose for it, instead of, you have a sticker that you're putting in the book?
It's like a, so it's like our computer for the, it's a tablet, so they call it a poll book, it's a tablet, and it's like our computer, like the desktop that we go to to check what your voter status is.
No, I get, I get that part.
But it's in a tablet, they call them poll books.
No, I get the poll books, I'm asking about the sticker that you were talking about.
Oh, it comes with a printer, and you can actually print like your name and your address, and we would put it on like your envelope, like early voting.
And who does that?
We would do it before we have you vote in the.
When you check in? Okay. Okay, so the poll, so, so the 14,400 is for the, the voting booths, the poll books, and, and what else? That's it? Okay. The next thing is, I'm going to ask a question, I think that I asked you last year, and I know you got additional, additional funds. Do you feel like you got enough funds this year to, to kind of incre, or increase the, you know, the customer service ability during those, during those parking sticker times?
So this is, this is not the parking section, but we can go to it if the counselor is ready for it.
I, I mean, I can wait, if, we're going to do another round of questions on, okay, I'll, I'll wait then. And the other thing was, the, the salary increases are just, are just the contractual plus the step?
That's right.
Okay.
There's no, no added positions in this department.
So, so that's all, that's all I have on, on this, except for maybe just one, sorry, one, one other thing on the dog tag thing. We have about 600 dogs, I'll bet you we have a lot more than that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right now, we're only up to six, around 600, it, it can vary between 700 and 900.
They're, they're leaving a lot of evidence around, so I, I think there's more than that. Is there, is there a way to try to get people to be paying for their dog licenses? We have some sort of outreach that goes on saying that you need to have a dog license, or else you can get a fine, or whatever it is?
They do give you a fine, you can have a dog license.
Okay.
Counselor?
They, so a couple years ago, we had someone that did like a how-to video, and it was on the website. Maybe it's gone because of the new website change with the, but I could definitely look into that, and I know that, I had a conversation with Bernabe about outreach, and I forget what else, even just curbing your dog. So just little things like that, but I could also have a conversation with the animal control officer.
I, I, I think that we could probably, I mean, I know we've made a lot of progress, and I think that's great, but I think we have a long way to go, too, to get people compliant with, with their dogs. But thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Teshi.
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Melinda Vega and Tenere Garcia just joined us, do you ladies have any questions?
No, I just wanted to excuse myself for being late, I apologize.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, we can move on.
Thank you, and now we'll go to parking, which is on page 172 in your book. The most exciting item of the night, Jeanette?
Everybody's favorite topic.
172, page 172.
So here, some of our accomplishments, I was able to, with the new website add, just in the Dropbox, a dedicated, the word parking, you click it. Instead, it used to be that you went to the city clerk's office, and then it, it sat in there, but if you didn't know that the two offices were combined, you wouldn't know to go there. And so IT was able to, so there's city clerks, and then there's the parking, and when you get into parking, everything is there, like the portal, and how to apply online, things to know, so that was separated. We did put a generic email address for inquiries for parking at, parking@chelsema, we did have to take it down because of the type of emails we were getting, so you might not see it there now, but I plan on putting it back up, just giving it a little bit of a break. And then our efforts to encourage early renewal of the parking program, I think, went really well. I know that you still saw lines, but they never went around the entire building. So we did have an increase on, through online, and we definitely had an increase with renewals during the month of January and February, so that was positive, we're very happy about that. And then I did mention to this to you earlier in the year, we did do, we always do social media, we always do the communicable channel, the message board there, the message board here, we did Fidel Help Me With The Reverse 911. And then something different that I know some of you received was, we did an email through the passport app to remind you, as long as you had an active sticker, that it was going to expire, and you could do it online. So that was something new. We also put flyers on the vehicles early on, and that, we, we noticed people came in with their flyer, these little strips where it, reminders. Next year, those flyers will have a QR code, I unfortunately caught on to me too late, but I will add that QR code, so it just brings them to the website. So we actually did something like that for the last election, where we put it, a QR code to take them, where do I vote? And so we used it there, and so now I started using it in parking, so you'll see that next year. So these little things, I think, really paid off for us.
Thank you, Jeanette.
We'll start on this corner, Melvin, Teshi, Counselor?
So with the people applying for stickers, parking stickers online, I, you know, heard from multiple constituents that there was a very heavy delay, you know, sometimes ranging from two to four weeks, what was the reason for those delays?
As far as I know, some of the people with some of the complaints were, they were on our end, if, so for example, if you were denied, you get an email saying you're denied, and if you, if it went to your spam, or you overlooked it, or you read it, and you just assumed it was an approval, I, there's nothing else that comes after that denial notice, some of them were mailed, lost in the mail. But we, I want to say we literally had five or 10 envelopes returned to us. This is probably the cleanest we've ever had it, where in the past, we send out the notices, or their renewal, we send out the sticker, and it'll get, they get kicked back, depending on if their name's not in the mailbox, if it's missing an apartment number. And I think some of it was, they were lost in the mail, and they were still waiting for the sticker, and that, that's what we found it to be, that they were approved, and they didn't get it, and then there was no follow-up until they got that first ticket. So we like to tell people, if you don't get it within a week after you're approved, then you should just follow up, and so people would apply a second time, so we would deactivate the first application and just process the second one, we would mark the first one as lost, so if we found it on the street, on another vehicle, the alarm just set off for us.
Is there a way to, instead of using email, you use a phone number, and then they get a text message?
I, I, I mentioned it to the vendor, I know they're definitely interested, but we're not there yet.
Okay, okay. And in terms of the office, would you say you have the enough manpower to digest all the applications within time? Or would you say there's a necessity to have, let's say, a temporary part-time person during those couple of months?
So like for, for example, right now, we, there's this lull in parking, but at that time, because of the staff I have, my dream team, they're just awesome, so we, that's part of that overtime, is that we're just going to stay, like Carmen, for example, come in first thing in the morning, and we'll stay at night, or we, I try to manage it. So two of you are not at the window, but you're, from eight to 12, you're going to process them online, and I know you've seen me in the lines, I'm not just sitting in the office saying, hey, guys, how's it going? So it's, at that time, it's all hands on deck, so it's nice that we have seven, because we never had seven in the office, so it's working, so I, and I appreciate the staff I have that you've given me, we're good right now.
Okay, I will also say, Counselor, that the possibility of adding a, a temporary person, maybe from January to March, is not something that, we'll, we'll research that further as, as an option.
Sounds good. Is there more questions?
All right, thank you, Counselor Taylor.
Well, I guess I have one less question to ask, since Counselor Teshi is so kind as to poach my question. Just kidding.
Well, can I add to that question? So DPW, through the greeters, they have, they really have helped us, so they're kind of.
They really have what?
Helped us, so they're kind of, two, the greeters at, in the front, when you enter. We train them, and they know what we're doing, and so they go through the line and kind of minimize, like, you know.
Yeah, I noticed, that they, they brought people clipboards and made sure that they were, everybody was ready by the time they got there. I was in that line.
On February 29th?
On February 29th, and I was heckled by, I think, every single employee in the building, so that was, that was very nice. Including your, your good self.
Yes, sir. I asked if you wanted to jump the line, you said no, so.
Hey, listen, I, I, I stand in line like everybody else, I'm just one of the people. So.
Counselor, do we have a question?
They were questioning me. So one of the things I want to ask is about the, is about the online parking pass process. So the reason why I was in that line was because I had tried multiple times to do it for the second time, and I still had problems with it actually going through. I'd get to the end, and then it would just, like, kick it back out. So I don't quite know exactly what, what was happening, it doesn't matter now, but, but I do think, I do think that, well, one of the questions that I wanted to ask was, how many pe, how many, how many parking stickers did we issue? And how, how many of those were done online?
So we typically do almost 10,000, so between January 1st and March 31st, we did 9,421, 9,421. And then the rest trickle in, so 1,600 as of, up until Monday, trickled in since that, since April 1st, so those are truly late.
You said an additional 1,600?
Mm-hmm, since.
Okay, so that's about 1,100.
So part of that, what happens is it's tax season, right, so people get newer cars, so they're really just changing the sticker, so they're reapplying.
Or 11,000, sorry.
So in, as far as onlines, just in January versus last year, it doubled. So in January last year, it was 606, and then this year was 1280. And then in February, for some reason, it was slightly in person, so it went from 962 to 1210. And I would say that that's because most people came in January, so that kind of shift. But then in March, we had 802 online, and it nearly tripled from last year, we had 300 online.
Okay, so roughly about 1,000 people out of the 11,000?
No, no, go ahead, T.
What do you mean?
How many total were online in the total?
Oh, so two, 27?
2,700.
Oh, 2,700.
Oh, 2,700 altogether?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, still.
But I mean, there's a good story to tell in terms of how much it increased.
Yeah, I mean, it, it shows, I guess, we're making some, we're making some progress.
There's progress, there's definitely progress.
I, I think there's a long way to go, that's about 25%, so, you know, I, I think, I think we should, you know, I, I understand some people have lack, lack of access to computers, although they can go and use. lack of access to computers, although they can go and use computers in the library, right?
Yes, we do. So it's surprising how many people do have printers. It's a common thing, it's become a common thing. But yes, they will, in a pinch, they'll go across and they, they go to the library and print out any PDFs.
I know everybody has a phone. They can take a picture of their documents, so. All right, so, and the other thing, give me just one second. The, the vendor for, for who gives out the tickets, I've received numerous complaints about this vendor. This vendor has been with the city for how long now?
SB Plus?
So SB Plus has been with us since 2010?
Since 2010. It's the same, it's the same one.
So in between, we lost their contract when we bid out. It's the, so we had, this is our fourth company, but they subcontract through SB Plus, this one. So we got them back again.
Oh, so this is, this is a subcontract?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, so it's really, you've got to shake the vendor's tree for them to shake the subcontractor's tree when something happens?
Well, we work very closely with the subcontractor, because they're, they work with us day to day. They issue the tickets.
Okay, all right. So, so, so just, just so you know, and I know that people will want me to say this because they, they call me with complaints about, about the, you know, some of these people are pretty rude, I think, to the people, especially if there's, if there's some sort of a conflict or something. So I would just, I've mentioned it to the city manager before. And, you know, I, I, I got to say that, that because parking is such an issue and we, we can't, or we have not been able to effectively really deal with this problem. It still remains on the top of, of mind for, I think, most residents who, who drive. You know, this is a big, this is a big issue for people. And I just think that bearing that in mind, you know, I think the vendor, the vendor needs to also kind of keep that in mind and try to de-escalate any kinds of, and, and any kinds of confrontations that happen. I don't know what their training is or whatever it is, but I, I know that this is a recurring theme, at least people calling me about it. I'm sure maybe other counselors have a similar experience. So I would just, I would just put that in your ear. And how much is that, how much is that, what do we pay for, for those services?
So they are out of other services. That's our staffing costs. So 653, 653,000.
We pay 653,000?
That's what the, so we're renewing the contract, I think, we're year two?
Oh, yeah. So, so other services is that?
Is staffing. Because we also do overnight. So it's daytime and overnight.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the overnight's the main thing though, right? And that's, no? Daytime is?
Eight to six, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Sounds, sounds, absolutely.
Okay.
Monday through Saturday.
Okay. All right, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Recupero, and this is not just towards you, just for my colleagues in general.
Okay, I got you.
I promise, Counselor, this is not just you.
Say it in a minute.
I just, um, just want to remind everyone that we should stick to questions so that we can get through today on time as much as possible. All questions are important, but if you have comments, let's try to save them towards the end, okay?
Well, I got a couple of important questions. With the parking sticker, there's always a big line, giant line, lot of complaints. We had that line now for four years, the same thing, three, four years, and it hasn't decreased. It still increases. We have a total of almost 14,000 cars. And you're thinking here, you say you got 12,000 and somehow change that you hand out parking stickers. You know, the stickers for the cars, so, so we got a whole bunch of cars. So you figure if everybody registers and most of them, you just said 2,000 other ones that just go online. So you got 10,000 that come to you. If you figure the numbers that go with what you said, they come to your office. So 10,000 is a whole bunch of people. And as you know, people procrastinate. They take a long time and they wait until the end. So there should be some type of solution to fix this problem. Well, because I get lots of complaints from people. They say they got to wait out there three, four hours. So maybe there's a way where you can make it small, make it easier for people to get it. You know what I mean? Instead, because you hand out 10,000, they say, but most of them come at the end. So most of your volume comes from the end, right? Those are the, so there got to be a way for us. I know before you used to send it through the mail. Then there was a glitch to it because people, you abused it. So if there's a way, right, that, when you send the pa, you send the paper saying you got to renew your parking sticker, right? Is, is there any possible way that people can send you the information through the mail? And, but you don't have online. Let's say online, you only got 2,000, so you still got 10,000 that come in.
We do, we still juggle by mail.
So someone can apply through the mail and give it to you?
They leave them in the green box sometimes, too. We process those.
So you do give them the application? Because I know, I don't remember getting an application that says, fill it out and we'll mail it back to you.
No, because you have to, you still have to provide your license registration.
Right, so they can give you a photocopy and send it in with the paper to you.
They do that.
So, but I don't remember ever seeing that on, and when you mail me the sticker, they says, oh, you got to come and renew your sticker. I don't see an application with it inside the envelope. You get what I'm saying? So you, you know, like, they will send you the information, right? And you will process the information. If the information is good, you will send them a sticker. And that will reduce the line that you have there. It would definitely reduce it by not, more than half. Because 80% of the people that are late will, will send it to you when they have the information.
So I couldn't include it. So when I did the census, I did a flyer. So it was a flyer as a reminder on how to renew. I can make the flyer instead the application for the renewal.
Yeah, right there. So you would eliminate a lot of time for the people and the people can give it to you. They can photocopy and send you all the information and redo it. And in there, you can tell them too. Say, listen, this, one of the things you have to know is if you owe tickets, you're not going to get it. So make sure you pay all your tickets that you owe before anything else. But that would reduce your load. I think that would help you in a sense in that, in that way. Like, it wouldn't be normal like tricks like you did. That's why, that's one. The next thing is, you have here, all, you, you send, you, you, you sold commercial stickers, 44 of them, right? What is that, a six-month period?
Six-month period for $300. Uh, so it's $300 for anyone whose vehicle is registered to a company, garaged out of Chelsea. So the person takes the car home, the vehicle home, the commercial vehicle.
That's half a year, right? It's not a whole year thing. It's only.
Six months.
So you, and, and, so here's another question. Let's say you don't live in Chelsea and you still want to get a sticker.
No.
You don't, you, you can't get it? So more or less, even on a commercial parking sticker, you have to live in the city to get a sticker?
So the commercial are two things. So in 2019, I was asked to look at the program, because I didn't come up with the program.
I remember when they actually, when they changed, because there were so many that were using and we would run out of the parking.
We literally were giving out 150 stickers every six months. And so when I was asked to look at the program and to clean it up and what loopholes we see in our office, so that 150 is down to 44. But of the 44, because the council still wanted people to be able to make a living. And so, because the original regulation in 2004 was no commercial vehicles were allowed. So they wanted them on private property. But we want people to be able to.
Yeah, you made a standard for the commercial vehicles. You can only be so many feet high, so many wheels.
So this, the, so the 44 that you speak of, some of them are Jeanette Centron. I have a car, a commercial vehicle registered in my home garage to Chelsea. That is a commercial sticker for free, because it's in my name.
Right, those are the ones, those are the ones that, the standard.
But then if it's commercial.
Above the standard that you set.
But if it's in, I take home and it's Fidel Painting and I take it home. It's commercial, but I have it garage, so the taxes come to the city of Chelsea. I pay $300 for that sticker. And so somebody's able to still work for that company and take the vehicle home.
I understand that. I saw, because I was looking, it decreased. But I'm still saying, you hear you got $300. It's actually $600 a year.
Yes.
Because it's only a half a year.
Correct. On top of the excise we get for the vehicle.
Right, but here you're saying, you know, when you look at this, you're thinking it's $200 for a year, but it actually ain't. It's $200 for half a year. So it's actually doubled what you're saying here.
I don't.
Well, here it says parking sticker 44, $300.
Counselor, what page are you on?
Huh?
What page are you on?
Page 173.
173, the table.
Oh, so that number is for the year. Yeah, so when I, when I do that at a glance, that's for the year. So that combines the two, that combines the two six-month periods, yes. So that's how much, yeah, so it's reduced.
$150 every six months? Earlier you said it was 300.
I can, I'll double check that. It is, it's 300 for every six months, so maybe, yeah.
If you said for the year, it won't be.
We'll double check that, Counselor.
I'll double check. Maybe the number doesn't include the free ones. I'll double check that. Gabby takes care of that for me. I will, I'll double check with her.
Another question I have. The landlord visitor's parking pass, is that for the, the homeowner of that house that doesn't live there?
Correct. Landlords are not residents of Chelsea.
Right, so you charge them, right?
Yes.
It's not the people that live there?
No.
It's them. Okay, and one more that I have to ask is, you sold 100 restricted passes. Restricted parking passes. You sold 100 of them?
Yes.
What are those things?
The meet, the metered ones. The 10 streets, I think you actually went before the commission a few years ago and added third in Congress. The ones that, so they're only valid on the street that, of the residential address. So if it's 100 Washington Ave, it's 100 feet left to right of the door. So that's five parking spaces to the left or right that are metered. You can't use it on the next street. You can't, it's on your street.
That's, so, so these ones will be just to that section. They can't be transported to one to the other.
And it's only, I think it's grandfathered in 10 streets and they all go along Broadway.
Yeah, that's the one that they used to do down here on Congress Ave. Whether before, they, they, they had to be metered and the people were living there. And then at the end, when they got rid of them, they couldn't, because they were charging the people that were living there to be metered right in front of the house. So they eliminated that. I remember that.
Counselor, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, one more question. Over here says total parking, 1,352. Is that what we get from them?
No, that's not revenue. That's expenses, Counselor.
That's the expenses, right?
That's expensive for.
That's paying the 650,000 and, so how much money do we make from this parking thing?
Give us one second. So in FY '24, to date, the revenue is 2.3 million dollars. FY '24 to date. But it's, we're almost at the end of May.
So we're doubling. If it costs us a million, we're making two. More or less, right? So.
A little bit more. We still have the rest of the fiscal year.
So you're just going to make more. All right, that's good. Thank you. No more questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions in this corner? Counselor Brown?
No, thank you. I apologize again for being late, but I always deal with Jeanette. And your office is run thoroughly. We had some questions, but she's always answered them. But I'm pretty forward for it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for joining us, Counselor. We've also asked for everyone to just stick to questions so that we can make it through the agenda on time. Counselor Robinson?
Have any of our people been assaulted on the street? Are they metered aids? I know I had a stepman a couple of times on Broadway when people were confronting.
We think in the last six months, eight months, we've had two incidences.
That was my only question.
Okay. Counselor Sanagay and then Counselor Jimenez.
My question was similar to Counselor Robinson's. Have you had any positive feedback from S, about SB Plus? Because I have only seen them work very hard. And as Counselor Robinson said, come in the middle of assault sometimes. They're, the people parking can be very aggressive. And I think that the vendor has handled everything with, with grace.
Thank you. I will pass that along. They, they really are good people. I think part of it, I, I said this last year, was there's a little bit of a language barrier with them. So I think the, sometimes that rudeness is part trying to say, oh, you have to go to City Hall. And so it may come out as rude. But they're, they're just use, very short, they're very short with people, few words. And they're trying to, so our motto is to, if they can issue the ticket, they will. If they cannot, they have to walk away from the situation and we'll mail it to the registered owner of the vehicle. Because we don't want the incident to happen. And it's a tough job. I, I've said this in the past. We try to hire Chelsea residents, but they don't want this type of job. So imagine you live here, you eat, breathe and you give out tickets and then you go shop with that person. So it's a difficult type of employment, really. And they're very passionate. And so I have to tell you, there, it's impressive. Like, if any of you ever want to come by the office, the things that they catch, even overnight in the dark, the fraud, they, they, they really are just very dedicated to their job. I'm very appreciative of them, but I'm also biased.
All right, Counselor Jimenez?
Just a quick question around the, does the processing of the parking ticket payments, does that go through you at all or is that all through the treasurer's office?
It's combined. So we have a lockbox service that's part of the data processing. So when you send the payment in, they're handled through the vendor and, but then passed along to treasurers. And then anything over the counter is here, but anything by mail is through them and it eventually, it gets to us.
And then for online payments, is that, does that go through?
So there's, that's more like treasurers, but yes, it's somehow through a check and then we, that, that's all passed through.
Got it. Just, just a quick, I guess, comment in general for the, probably more for the city manager. Just if there's any way that we can kind of push for online payment processing to the, for the fees to just be lower, especially when, you know, you're looking at a $25 parking ticket and you're paying a $3 fee. It just ends up being, you know, it's like 11% on top of it.
I will say this, I don't know if most people know this, so most comp, most cities and towns, when you pay a ticket, it's a percentage. And we fought very hard to make it a one rate. So it is 275 and you can pay $10,000 worth of tickets at 275. So it is something that we will keep pushing with the next vendor. I don't know that we could get it lower than that, but it used to be a percentage. And so it, it didn't, it drove people to City Hall because they didn't want to pay a percentage, depending on how much you owe. And then I did want to mention that the à la carte to pay per ticket is, has been done as a last week. It's all last, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right. I don't have any questions. I think we're all set with questions. Thank you so much, Jeanette, for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The council requested that we do the city manager's budget next. The city manager's budget is on page 60. On page 60. And with me tonight is, is our new team. So as, as, as the coun, as the council knows, I went before the city council, before I officially began on the job, with a free cash request that essentially showed the restructuring and reorganization of the city manager's office. And at the time, I, I, I believe we had a few subcommittees discussing my, my vision for this expansion of the city manager's office. I do recognize that it is an expansion. It is an expansion from what it has been historically. But when I started here, my, my biggest concern was what Uh, but, uh, when I started here, my, uh, my biggest concern was walking into, in, in, into this, uh, um, this office, into this role with really high expectations, right? High expectations of myself, but also high expectations of the council and high expectations of our community, right? And, and not having the team to back up and accomplish those, those expectations. Uh, um, as we all know, uh, our, our deputy city manager, uh, uh, i- is likely to retire soon, right? Uh, uh, and, and we needed to, to, uh, um, keep him around, as, as you saw yesterday. But, but really bolster, uh, uh, the, um, uh, the capacity of, of our office. Uh, um, I also heard loud and clear, uh, from this council that, uh, residents had to be a priority. We, we needed to be responsive to our residents and we needed to not give them a runaround. We need to, we needed to provide them answers to issues that they were having. I also heard from this council that we needed to gain efficiencies, to be proactive, right? Not reactive, to, to foresee the, the issues that were coming, uh, particularly in finance. Uh, but also in, in, uh, in, in, in departments that really touch, uh, our citizens. The city clerk's office being one of them and inspectional services, uh, being, being another one. Uh, I am so excited to have this team, uh, uh, with me tonight. Uh, um, a- as, as you know, it, it, it took a long time to get all, all these folks recruited, onboarded. Uh, a, a lot of them, uh, were recruited from, uh, very prestigious jobs, uh, in, in Somerville, uh, in Arlington and Brookline, right? And, and, um, I am glad that they took a chance on our city. Uh, uh, um, a lot of them are, are, uh, Chelsea folks, uh, uh, people who, who graduated from, uh, uh, Chelsea High School. Uh, and, and people who, who are committed, uh, to this community. Um, uh, our focus over this next year is going to be to realize, realize this vision that we have, uh, in, in, in front of you. Uh, um, we, uh, have hit the ground running. We are work, working very hard, uh, in, in, in changing our internal culture. We, we are working, uh, uh, very hard in optimizing the process and, and really, uh, executing on, uh, on the things that we've been talking about for a long time, right? So, so, uh, uh, what our HR manager, HR manager said yesterday, what was that City Hall needed an employee handbook. That is something that we've been talking about for as long as I've been around in, in, in the city of Chelsea, right? And, and it's something that just, we did not have the capacity, the staff time, the knowledge, the, uh, uh, the, um, the, uh, sheer hours to get it done. Uh, uh, over the next tw- twelve months, I, uh, I am committed to, to, to seeing a transformation. I am committed also to, to having this department be more hands-on in the operations of, of, of the community. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, just today, I saw, uh, Mr. Bernabe Rodriguez i- in, in my office with one resident for two hours. And it, and it was, it was a resident, uh, uh, who, who has basically, uh, been bounced around between, uh, uh, organizations and departments and has an issue with an EC pass. Nothing to do with the city, right? But, but the, the, when residents come to our door, it doesn't matter if it's mass DOT issue or if it's an EC pass issue or, or if it's a housing issue. They expect this, someone in this building to, to, uh, uh, to answer the call. Uh, and that is the culture that we are trying to implement, uh, implement in this building. Uh, um, and that is the culture that we are, uh, uh, really living, uh, every day. Um, with that said, uh, uh, our, um, page, uh, sixty-three, you will see our, uh, our expenses. Um, there is one major increase on, in expenses. Obviously, the, the, the city manager's budget, uh, from an expense standpoint, is not a big one. Uh, we, we, we really, uh, um, keep it lean and tight. There is one major change, and that is in, in community events, right? So, so, uh, hopefully you have seen a difference in, in the last, uh, five months that I've been here. We, we, we are, I am making a huge priority in being outside of City Hall. We, we, uh, um, one, uh, I think the highlight of my time here is, is the peace rally that we held in, in, in front of City Hall where we had, uh, uh, over three hundred people, right? Uh, and, uh, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, all of these things take, uh, a financial commitment. Whether it's food or sound or overtime, right? Uh, um, so we, we are going to be very intentional in, in terms of being out in the community, uh, uh, providing events, uh, providing organizations, uh, organization in the community, uh, place making it, and really pushing what, what, what we do, uh, uh, for the city of Chelsea. Uh, on the, on the salary side, uh, you'll see a table, uh, on page sixty-four. Um, we, we, uh, when I started here, right, uh, Nedkeef was the last person standing, if you will. Uh, Lou Desw was, was on maternity leave. Uh, we, uh, Tom and Brazino, who, uh, uh, had a, an innovation per, person uh, in, in, uh, in, in the department that, that had gone unfilled and actually unfunded, right? So, so, uh, uh, and Bernabe was actually in, in that office at one point as well. At one point, uh, the city manager's office, uh, was more robust. However, it, it, uh, it's, uh, compared to last year, uh, we, we have significantly staffed up, right? The, the, um, the, uh, office and the department, I, I think it's, it's, it's not only, uh, necessary, but, but i- it is required to do everything that the council is asking us to do.
Thank you, city manager. I believe we're starting on this corner. Uh, okay. Counselor Robinson?
I think me and the city manager are on the same page. We always talk about my major concern is the finance and paying attention to what we're spending. And we've kind of back and forth on it. That's my only comment.
Awesome. Counselor Jimenez?
So I, I, just, just a quick comment. I, I know that you, uh, were just talking about the community events line. I think that, um, it's, it's really, you know, the, the way that you talk about it, I think makes a lot of sense. Um, you know, especially I think when we talk about civic engagement in our community. I think a lot, uh, every counselor here has, has talked about the importance of developing civic engagement. And I think that what we've seen, kind of the, the best example that I can think of is the women's commission that we just had, where, you know, when I, when I think of picking people to do a thing, whatever it might be in Chelsea, it, it often ends up being a lot of the same folks. Um, and, and it's part of that is because we, we have a lot of folks who are not engaging. So it was really refreshing to see that in the women's commission, that there were a lot of new names. And, uh, you know, names that we, we don't often hear when we're talking about these groupings. And so I just, I really appreciate that we're putting these efforts into community events and making sure that we are out there because that's how we're gonna find that next generation of leaders, right? And I'm, and I don't mean, you know, each generation, just like people that have not been engaging in our community who may want to, but just don't know how. So I just really appreciate the work that you are doing on that, um, with Bernabe and with our new deputy city managers. I, I, you know, from what I've seen so far and, and working with Bernabe with constituents, we're, we're really doing that. Um, and I know that, you know, from conversations that we, that I've had with the deputy city managers, that we are really, um, trying to think about new and different ways of doing things, which I think will just yield new relationships for City Hall. So I just really appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Counselor Vega? Counselor Brown?
Yes, I just have one question. Um, with the, um, hires, um, that you have here, are these contractual, um, hires? Meaning, um, are they three-year contracts? Are they two-year contracts? Because we have nothing really to base it on for the next few years. So I'm looking forward. I want to know what we're looking at. So, um, when you hired, um, for instance, um, whether it's the deputy city manager of operation or finance or the constituent services, are those, um, annual salaries for three years, four years, or five years? What are we looking at here?
Great question, counselor. The, the, uh, in, in, in the city manager's office, all the employees are exempt. Um, so they're not union. Uh, speaking broadly, there's three employees in the, in the entire organization that, that are under contract. So it's myself, which is a, a contract that is signed by the, the council, uh, the police chief, which is a contract that is signed by the city manager, and the fire chief, which is a contract that is signed by the city manager. Uh, and, and luckily, all three of those positions are, are locked in for a while.
Correct.
Right? The, the, uh, those are the only employees in this city that have contracts. Everyone else is employed at will.
I just wanted to know.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Counselor, uh, Dona Iglesias?
I just want to say, um, thank you because creating that team is work. And coming in here to an empty office with no employees, uh, was scary. So I'm excited to see what this team is all about and I'm excited. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. So. You and I have, have had, I think, extensive discussions about, um, about your vision and, um, you know, what you've proposed in order to make that happen. So let me just start by saying. There, there are people out there in the community who are skeptical of, of, of this approach. And by, by, you know, almost doubling your budget to, to bring in more people to, to, to get the job done. I myself, I understand that, e- especially at the municipal level, government needs to do whatever it needs to do to get the job done, okay? Because that's, that's, that's the main response. There's, there's a, there's a, there's kind of a, a basic needs thing that needs to happen, okay? And, and that, that's at the municipal level. So, so I'm all for spending money when we're getting, um, a good return on that, on that, on that money. Some people because, and, and, you know, a lot of these people have been around a long time and are, are, you know, well, we used to do this, you know, um, with a lot less money and, you know. So I, I would say this. I have basically, uh, said that I, that I support what you're, what, what you're doing here. I do recognize it's a, it's a nice financial commitment. So what I would suggest is that for those people who are skeptical out there, that you, that, that spending this extra money on the man, on managing the beast, uh, that as we go along, you can document where, um, we are gaining efficiencies, where we are saving money on X, Y, and Z, and presenting this council with a report of that so that we can, in turn, answer those critics um, who, who, who don't think that this is a good idea. And, and, you know, from, from my, from my perspective, you know, you deserve a chance. We hired you. This council, I think, has a lot of faith in, in, in you and your ability. So you deserve an opportunity to do things your way. However, that being said, you are still accountable to this council to deliver the, the necessary results. And I, I, I think it would be, it would put a lot of people's mind at ease if we could get a report, um, back on how things are going, what we've done. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, I, I think it would, it would, if it's working out, um, that's great. Put it to bed. We don't need to talk about it any, any longer. And, 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 and we can, and we can answer those critics. So, um, as far as the, you know.
Sorry, you're my counselor. The, the, uh, you and I have had a, a many conversations on this, right? And, and as you know, I, I spent, uh, thirteen years in, in the private sector, uh, in, in a Fortune one hundred company where it was all about quarterly results, right? The, uh, hope doesn't matter, right? Uh, uh, and intention doesn't matter. What matters is, 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 is results. Uh, and, uh, I had a long conversation today with, with Counselor Robinson exactly about this, right? And, and, um, I, you know, uh, this, this council challenged, uh, uh, our, our team to, to produce, uh, what I think is, was, was the first one hundred day plan of, of any administration. I, you know, the, the, we, we put firm, firm goals and, and firm, firm commitments in, in that one hundred plan. Uh, uh, and we executed each one of, of, of those goals, right? The, the, uh, um, we, this team in particular, has spent a, a lot of time ensuring that, that, that no, no balls were dropped in this transition, right? That, that, uh, um, I didn't have any excuses because, because excuses do not matter in this game, right? The, the, uh, uh, we are one hundred percent committed, uh, uh, in, in showing the return on investment on, 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 on our budget, but, but also on our city. Uh, uh, I, I think, I think we have, uh, a few vehicles where it's gonna be easy to, to show this progress. One of them, of course, it's our, our comprehensive master plan that we are going to engage in, uh, uh, over the next, uh, two years. And, and that's gonna serve, uh, as, as, as a constant check-in with the community. Uh, but what I did with, with Counselor Robinson, uh, uh, today is, uh, uh, I, um, I, I, I promise, I committed, uh, uh, to six-month, uh, uh, holistic reviews of city's operations, uh, uh, really specifically resp, uh, reporting back to the council on, on goals, on initiatives, uh, and results, right? On revenue, on projections, uh, uh, and, and a recap of, of, of how we are doing.
I, I, I think that, I think that that's great. And so that, I think that's, I think that would put a lot of people's minds at ease. And by the way, you know, I've, I've sat with, uh, with, with, with everybody except for Bernabe. Uh, but it's, uh, you know, fine choices. I, I have every confidence, um, in, in their ability to, um, to do the job. We, we just, I think, need the, need the, need the results back. And that's all, that's all I'm, I'm asking for and, uh, and it seems like you've already, you've already committed to do that. So that's great. Um, and other, other than the salaries, that was the main thing for your department. So I'll pass it on to, uh, hoping to take your question.
You know, I, I will say it's, uh, really, uh, y- you know, it's, it's really nice to see that you've taken this role as city manager of the, the city of Chelsea in the past couple of months and, and you've done it and you've made it seem easy, but I know it hasn't been, right? And, and I, you know, I was here and I, and I saw when you came before the council and, and you, you said, you, you said, you know, you, you described yourself. You said you would be a proactive leader. You said, you know, you would, you, you would do an outstanding job and that's exactly what you have done so far. Um, and I agree with, uh, Counselor Taylor. You know, I think, uh, a lot of people do have, have some doubts about, you know, what does doubling the budget of your office entail and what are actually gonna be the results that you bring forth. I did have a, a number of questions for both the, um, deputy city managers, Mason and Fields. And I also had questions about the director of service, of constituent services, uh, Mr. Rodriguez. Um, I don't think today's the time to get all those reports, right? As, uh, Counselor Taylor mentioned. So I will, you know, simply take on, on, you know, on faith that the work you've done so far has been great. So I expect the work you will continue to do will be great. Um, and we'll just be following up with those results and, uh, we'll, we'll continue with what we have for today.
We're excited.
Thank you, counselor. I also don't have any questions. I can't say there has never, ever been a time that I have not been able to check in with you, city manager. Your door has always been open. If it's not text messages, it's emails. And I truly appreciate that. And I know that that same energy goes to the community. Any community member that comes in through that door, you are actively, um, engaging with. And so, um, if questions do come up, I know that your team is also very accessible. So thank you all. I'm really excited to be working with you guys.
Thank you.
We are going to do.
Legislative budget, which is on page fifty, uh, fifty-four. You don't mind that.
Thank you, Bernabe.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. Um, I will go over our department budget. Um, if you can turn to page fifty-eight, I'll go over the expense lines and our increases for each line item and give you an explanation as to what they are. Um, if you look at our largest increase for this year, it's under our regular salary line item. As many of you know, the, the last council voted to increase your salaries from fourteen thousand to twenty-eight thousand. Um, that figure is accounted for. It takes up approximately eighty percent of the salary increase for this fiscal year. The remaining forty-three thousand is covered by the council increase of my salary in December of last year, the projected increase for our legislative aid upon successful completion of this probation period, which is worth noting, council will have to act upon before you go on summer recess, as well as the cost of living increases that were afforded to all exempt employees. As the two physicians in our office are exempt, we received them as well. Um, the, those funds were paid for by supplemental appropriation to get us through this fiscal year, but all those increased salaries are accounted for in the proposed FY twenty-five budget. Um, our advertising line increased by a thousand. Uh, that was preemptive on my end as I anticipated that council priorities would necessitate an increase in advertisements in the newspaper. And, um, it was also noted that the advertising costs increased for all city departments, so that factored in as well. Um, our printing budget also increased by a thousand. We utilized that fund to purchase business cards for council and staff, for your nameplates for council and for the office, as well as plaques for. for your nameplates for council and for the office, as well as plaques for ongoing councilors and the president. But we also use it for commemorative items. We have a supply of existing commemorative, um, certificate holders from the past that we have utilized, but we're running low on. So I anticipate needing to purchase them sometime this fiscal year, and they are not cheap. So I figured an increase in that budget would be in order. Our largest increase for a line item is our office supply budget is an increase of four thousand dollars. The last fiscal year budget, um, I was not in my position and with enough time to actually give input on the FY twenty-four budget. So the numbers that were before you then came from my predecessors. Um, I can tell you just based on my time in this position, that one thousand dollar office supply budget was woefully inefficient. Luckily, due to extremely conservative spending in the office, as well as intra-budget transfers, I was able to get us through the fiscal year without needing a supplemental from council. But those two methods are not sustainable for the next fiscal year, so an increase was necessary. I also requested an increase of five hundred dollars for the community events budget. Same as the city manager's budget. We use it for, in our case, to provide food for council budget nights for the inauguration day, and if there are any other events that council deems necessary. The existing amount has been enough within reason with conservative spending on our end. But I have received, um, sufficient concerns from some council that what we're providing is not enough. So, so I, I requested an increase of five hundred dollars in that line item. The rest of our remaining line items for the budget for this year remain unchanged. If you have any questions about each line item or what they're for, I'll be happy to answer. In terms of, um, what we accomplished in the last fis- in the last fiscal year, I'm, was only in the position for a year and two months now, but I'm pretty proud of what we were able to accomplish, not on the council end, but on our office end as well. Since my time in the position, we created an entirely new admin structure for the office. The last two, the last two positions, their roles and responsibilities were extremely convoluted, muddled, and overlapping. When I got into the position, we made sure to separate the positions as needed and create appropriate job descriptions for each and day-to-day functions to ensure a smooth operation in the office. In addition, um, one of the first, uh, things I did when I got into this position was I conducted a comprehensive review of your rules and regulations. They hadn't been updated in decades, and they were woefully out of date. I'm grateful that after meeting with the Subcommittee on Rules and Regulations, that the council passed those rules package. And you also passed your first legislative code, which was, in essence, our office's employee handbook, which our office never had. I'm grateful that council agreed to all the terms and legislative code and that it gave not just, it made my job easier in performing day-to-day functions in the office, but it also provided some measure of job security to the two positions in the office as we are under, now under informal contract for a period of time. So it was appreciated. One of our accomplishments, but also our goals coming into the next fiscal year, when the council met and discussed your priorities, one of your priorities was transparency for all things you do. Working with Deputy City Manager Devon Fields, and I know City Manager Meltz agrees as well, we are working on getting all of your agendas, agenda packets, minutes, and links to your video feeds for your meetings posted on the city website. My goal will be, by the end of this fiscal year, to have from calendar year twenty-four up till now, all of your subcommittee minutes, regular meetings, and special meetings, everything that we have uploaded on the city website for the public to have access to. And I know in conversations with the Deputy City Manager that hopefully, going forward, sometime in the future, our goal will be to, um, implement some kind of software-based system on the website to streamline the process and make it more accessible, not just for council, but for all boards and commissions in the city. So I look forward to that. It's definitely not a near-term project, but it's something I look forward to, going forward to, increase transparency for council. In addition, um, one of the things I'm most proud of is I've, I like to think in my position so far, I've been able to improve the council office's relationship with departments in the building. Before my time, that, um, I guess some departments didn't really know how to interact with the council office for reasons that were not necessarily in our control. In the last few months, under City Manager Meltz and with help from people in some other departments in the city, we've been able to streamline that relationship and make a better working relationship. Our office serves as your liaisons in the building. So if we don't have a positive relationship with the city department heads, we're not able to effectively do our jobs and make sure you do yours. So I committed to work on that then, and I commit to work on that for the rest of the fiscal year. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have about our FY twenty-five budget.
Thank you. We will start on this corner with, uh, Counselor Teshi.
I, I only have one question. Why are we not paying Cliff more? He has done a remarkable job, and he has been, he has met every single deadline that has come before his desk. And he has responded and worked with every single personality in this body, and that is something to really admire. So I really look forward to working, continue working with you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, so I, look, I, I, I think I was your first fan when we were on the Hiring Commission and, uh, and.
Our first fan.
You know, and, uh, you know. But, but in, seriously, I mean, you, you've done, you've done an extraordinary job, you know, especially with, um, with the council rules and legislative code and working with us to try to rebuild this council as an institution. I think in prior years, this, this council was all about personalities. And, and we can see where that got us, right? So this council really needs to be built back up into a solid institution that's respectable and does its business and is professional and, 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 and Cliff, I think you have helped us to, um, start that process, and I hope you're gonna be here for a long time to, to, to continue, um, to continue that process. And, uh, I think anytime, you know, um, I've had a question or needed something, you know, you know, you guys back there are, are great. So thank you very much. I appreciate the job that you do, and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Recubro.
Over here, I don't see, the legislative includes us, right? All of us, right?
Correct.
Over here says, I don't see anything here for expenses for us. More or less, everybody gets an expense. We don't have anything. Where is it? What, what did we get last year to do things for us? A thousand bucks?
What, what?
I wanna allocate more money. If we have an event, right? I wanna allocate more money to the legislators, you know, to us. We don't have enough money for anything.
So that would be our office.
Two thousand five hundred. That's peanuts. What, what, the, the way things are today, what's two thousand five hundred? There's eleven of us. That's peanuts. They should triple. It should be at least five to seven thousand. And that's even peanuts. You go to Revere, they got twenty-five thousand. You go, you know, that's one, and that's what I would like to see. The legislators here, since my fellow councillor says wants to see a good, what good is that? So we wanna be really good, but we get treated the worst. We should be equal to everybody else, or maybe get respected in the same way. If you get a department head, a big department head gets fifty, twenty thousand dollars to spend on something that, we are the department heads. All of us combined is the department heads. We should get money. Two hu- two thousand five hundred dollars, what is that? That's peanuts. That's hardly anything. So I would like to see that increase. We wanna get treated the same as everybody else. We're not a lower grade. We're the equal grade. And the next thing here is, I don't understand. What is conference travel? We don't go anywhere. Is that for you, Clifford?
I believe that was made at the request of the council in the last fiscal year. I believe the intention was for council to be able to utilize it to go to Mass Municipal Association conferences, et cetera. It was worth noting, at the beginning of this year, um, a lot of the new councillors went. The City Manager's office does have the account with the Mass Municipal Association. So the City Manager was grateful, generous enough to, um, afford you all that through his budget. But that was the intent of that line.
So that could be used for events, is what you're saying?
It, it can be used for conference and travel. Yeah.
But that's peanuts. That's three thousand bucks. There's eleven of us. What, what is that? Split three by eleven. What is that to each one of us?
Okay, Counselor, do you have another question?
Yeah. I wanna get treated. All of us should get treated better than we do. And all of us should complain about it. You know, what is two thousand dollars? I've been looking through this budget. I see big money. We have little money. We don't need much money, but we should, if you wanna go, let's say, the council president or her, you know, or me, any of us wanna go to another city to see how city councils actually operate and how, how do we can better ourselves or maybe learn from other places? What are you gonna go with three hundred dollars? You can't even rent a roof.
So, Counselor, that, um.
That's what I, I would like to see.
I hear you. I, I would just encourage, then, if there is, um, something you would like to submit in recommendation of that.
Yes, I'm gonna submit it. I'm gonna submit it. I'm gonna submit it that we get. Treat it fairly like every other city councillor that's in the other city. You say you wanna make yourself a better council. A better council could be by seeing how other people operate, how they do it. If you never go anywhere and you don't see how anything is, how are you gonna know? So we should have a budget that all of us should be allowed to go see in other cities or in other towns how they operate. That way we can have an idea. That's what I'm gonna put that in, and I'm gonna put in that we get more money for our budget instead of twenty-five hundred. Like, you know, if we have something here that we wanna, we should be able to be a city council. Don't be a cheap council.
Okay. Any other questions, Counselor?
That's it. I got no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tenaidy Garcia.
I wanna thank Cliff for holding it down. Thank you. I also agree with Counselor Recubro. I cannot agree with him less. I feel like we also need workshops and other, um, educational, um, events where we can, you know, um, give that information out to our community and, and grow with our community. So I, I agree with Counselor Recubro, and that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Brown.
No question. I like the budget that it is.
Counselor Vega.
Cliff, I wanted to say thank you. Um, I wanna, you know, one little discrepancy here on page fifty-nine. City Council District Two, Melinda Vega. I can zoom without the mouse.
We'll make that edit. Sorry about that.
A little typo there, you know? That's it. Just to lighten up the mood, guys.
Sorry about that.
On the record. All right. Counselor Robinson.
I'm gonna follow up on Counselor Tish's comment in regards to Cliff. And I think as a body, we don't really understand the amount of work that Cliff does. Just the fact of getting together all the agendas that are, not only go to the council, go to the city manager staff, to the law department, it takes quite a bit to do, and I think we undervalue him, and I think, uh, we should look at that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sanig.
I also wanted to thank Cliff. Um, as someone new, he has, um, really helped me a lot and has never made me feel uncomfortable when I didn't know something. And that means a lot when you're a rookie. So thank you, Cliff.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown.
Just for the record, I just want the public to know that, um, Clifford is, um, a graduate of Chelsea High, former city council member, who is a dedicated city council member. He comes here with the same attitude, the same, um, dedication to bring, as already has been said. He's very fair with each and every one of us as councillors. His budget outline, his description of the budget outline, some of the things that we have done and picked up and doing more of this year. And I think the figures, um, represent what we can look forward in the next year. And I think if it's something that we start to grow in, and whether it's conferences or budget, city events and stuff, we can look at that now. But I still want us to really focus on trying to keep our budgets within reach and also improper of what the recommendations are from our leader, who is Clifford, and Hamir here, um, to do the heavy lifting and make this a great budget for us to work with this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, I will echo the sentiments of many of my colleagues and just say that working as council president with Cliff has been amazing. I can't express how grateful I am for you, Cliff. This office would not function without you. And I think that, um, when we think about the future of Chelsea and when we think about growth and success, we have to invest money now. If we want to make sure that the folks that are doing the work and, uh, doing the work with such love and commitment to the community, doing the work because, um, not just because it's work, but because it's their city, that's, you know, you don't, you don't find that anywhere. And so I, I would, again, um, agree with many of my councillors that, um, you know, we, we should evaluate some of the, um, proposed, um, salaries and, and, and I also agree with Counselor Recubro on, um, training and opportunities for growth for the councillors. I think that that is something that always should be welcome in this chamber, growth and, and opportunity for us to unite and learn. I'll just add that, um, not only, um, is, is Clifford amazing, but also he, um, has been really supportive in, 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 uh, not just the hiring of our, uh, city secretary, Amin, but also, um, in, in maintaining, uh, an office that is, um, uh, well-run and, and respected among each other with, um, um, you know, just consciousness of even holidays and, and celebrations and, um, um, you know, cultural sensitivities. Like, it, it's, it's the whole package with Cliff. And I would, um, yeah, I would just encourage us all to think, um, about how we can continue to, um, support, um, our, our office and, and, and continue to ensure that our office, um, is, is, um, going towards a successful future as it is right now. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you, Madam President and members of council. Thank you.
Okay. I think we'll be moving back to your team.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, madam. Uh, we now will move to, um, I get the pleasure to introduce our city auditor, Ed Dunn. And he's gonna be presenting a few items. He's gonna start off with the auditing department. And then there's a few other items to close us out for this, the budget hearing process. Um, so, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Michael, and good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Dunn. I am the city auditor. For those of you who don't know me, I will say that I've been the city auditor for the past eighteen years, and I've been with the city for twenty-eight years. Before we begin to look at the book, I'd just like to say a few things. I am very happy to be here this evening to talk you through the areas of the budget that I have direct responsibility over. I'd like to take a few minutes to describe what the auditing department does so that you can have a better idea of what we're all about. So first, we are responsible for reviewing the city's financial operations and to ensure that the city is complying with federal state statutes and municipal finance laws. In addition, we are responsible for completing and submitting all required annual reports to the Department of Revenue, our oversight authority. We are managing and maintaining the city's general ledger, including grants, to ensure the accuracy of both the expenditures and the revenue side, and we are doing that daily. We establish the annual budget in concert with the city manager and with his team. So everything that you've heard for the past three days, we will then implement into the general ledger once it gets approved, and we will then be managing that as we go forward. We are responsible for the accounts payable operation, which is a weekly payables operation for the entire city. And finally, we are responsible for overseeing the outside city audit that is done on an annual basis. I think it's funded through the council, and that's by intent that it will be funded through the council and not through my office so that they can be independent in the way that they operate. So beginning on page sixty-five of the budget book is the auditing department. So you'll see the mission statement, the department at a glance, the accomplishments, and the goals. I'd like to ask you to take a look at page sixty-six for a. I'd like to ask you to take a look at page sixty-six for accomplishment number two. And with accomplishment number two, we were notified about two months ago that for the twenty-fifth consecutive year, the city has been awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is issued by the Government Finance Officers Association for our annual comprehensive financial report. This is a significant accomplishment that the city can be proud of. I have participated in that for the past eighteen years of the twenty-five and I'm particularly proud of that as well. So that is a huge achievement for us. These reports can be located on the city website, under the auditing department, financial documents. All of our historic reports are there, so you'll be able to review that at your leisure and I'd encourage you to do that. So turning to page sixty-nine of the book, these microphones are. Page sixty-nine shows the number of positions that we have in the auditing department. We currently have five positions, three of the five are Chelsea residents. We are requesting consideration for a new position, the new senior financial analyst position. And this will allow us to have increased oversight and compliance in our operation. The city has challenges with grant reimbursements in a timely manner, with revenue review and with minor audit finding cleanup. With this position, we'd be able to fill in these gaps and this position will provide us with greater resources to do that. So I respectfully request that position to help us with all of the work that I just outlined. Uh I'm happy to answer questions on the auditing department.
Alright, uh we'll be starting in this corner, councillor Sanig, councillor Robinson?
No question.
Councillor Vega, councillor Brown?
I just wanna comment, thank you for your dedication. Every time I have a question with finance, I come to you. You and your staff have really been open arms and open doors and it, it, it's recorded here in the last twenty-five years. I wanna really thank you for your dedication.
Thank you very much councillor.
Councillor Tanaydi Garcia?
Um just wanted to thank you and that is a huge accomplishment to continue and provide excellent financial reporting for our city, representing us at a state level is beautiful, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Recubro?
Over here, on page sixty-nine you got AFP ARPA specialist, right?
Yes.
Well, ARPA doesn't exist anymore, we ain't getting any more ARPA money, so what do we need a specialist for?
So last year's budget, we asked for that to, to assist in the accounts payable operation and so that will be funded for another year.
And what happened, be funded, it's, it's on a grant, right?
It's funded from the ARPA grant, yes.
Let the people understand what a grant is, I'm gonna tell you what a grant is. They create a position with a grant and it never goes away. So this position becomes a permanent position, so let the people know exactly when they tell you a grant.
Councillor respectfully, last year when I came before the council to ask for this position, you asked me the same question. And what I said then was we will not continue the position without coming to the council to ask for that permission. And I stand by that statement.
I, I, I understand Mr. Dunn, I've been here a while, through the years that I've been here, right? I've never seen a position, there was, uh let's say created and then disappeared, it was always funded.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, I wanna know what, what happens when the ARPA funds are not there?
So I think the response is.
We don't continue with this position and we've made the incumbent aware of that.
Okay, then another.
Thank you councillor, so I will first echo what Mr. Dunn is stating. Um that would be something that we will look into in a future year and we would come back to the council and discuss. However, you know, due to the level of, like, this is probably a repeated theme. As funds increase and budgets have increased over time, you know, there's different additional activity and that, we, we discussed that with the procurement office um last night. Um the same would be the true with this department. Understanding that ARPA is uh still gonna be continuing until December of twenty-twenty-six, meaning there will be expense activity till then. And this, this particular position can be funded off of that, that funding source until then. But there are certain projects that this department will be taken upon, will be taken on um as we've been charged with, from this team level, to try to leverage certain softwares, uh specifically our enterprise finance software, which is Munis, to uh start a project to do AP decentralization. And um well, so accounts payable decentralization would uh move some of the workload that's heavily been placed on the auditing department to the other departments in the city, which then would put the, the, this department into a better position to not need a position like this going forward.
So, so I, from the prior time that I, from, I remember from prior budgets, uh you used to send some of your work out, contract some of your work out?
Yes, we still do that.
So with this position, you won't have to send no contractor out?
No, we, we'll still, so this ARPA position is going away, the ARPA accounts payable and as deputy manager Mason stated.
So you won't have to contract that out?
Let me answer the question, so as, as the deputy manager Mason stated, the ARPA position is going away, what we are trying to do is position ourselves for decentralization of accounts payable. That would allow us to automate the process because right now it's heavily based on, on paper and passage of paper between departments, our emails. We wanna centralize our, our database to allow for departments to enter that and for us to receive it electronically and then approve it electronically. And so that will reduce the amount of staff that's necessary on accounts payable. But it doesn't do anything for what I previously mentioned about compliance because the accounts payable position doesn't do that, the financial analyst does, the senior financial analyst does. We're doing all these tasks that we would like not to do, but we have to have staff to be able to shift the responsibilities over in order for the assistant auditor and the auditor to be able to concentrate on compliance and on the decentralization.
So I understand, so once this position goes away, right? You're gonna hire a position to fully staff you and make it more easier for you? Or you're just gonna stay with the staff?
In this budget, I'm requesting a senior financial analyst. So that will be the senior financial analyst, the financial analyst, the auditor, the assistant auditor and one accounts payable specialist.
And what's that, to be determined, what position is that?
That's the senior financial analyst that I'm requesting that you provide permission for us to have.
And that will cut on you sending your stuff outside?
Eventually, eventually, right now we don't have those resources available to, to bring the work in. But we, we will be bringing the work back in, we do have outside consultants, I favor the outside consultants for some of the more extensive reporting that occurs for the DOR. We have a schedule A report that takes days to complete and it's hard for us to do that. So we support the fact that we have a consultant assisting us with that. However, smaller tasks like the accounts receivable and the accounts um cash reconciliations can be done in-house rather than being sent out. So we'd like to bring that work back in, the free cash calculations, we can bring that work back in. But some of the other tasks that they are doing for us, we'd like to keep with them.
Another question, um we have, we had all kinds of money for ARPA, right? We still have some, right?
Yes.
So how about giving some back to the people of our city? Uh like uh homeowners, try to, you know, I heard in other cities they do that. You know, can we do something, like, we don't wanna lower the, the, don't take the taxes away, but for one year, just leave them, level them off and don't increase the taxes. You know, it's not that you're not gonna get your taxes, so we'll use some of that ARPA money for that. For, you know, I've been wanting to talk about that, to maybe give the homeowners, you know, homeowners occupied, they live there, some type of relief to the ARPA money, can we do that? Like, don't raise the taxes for one year, we can't, we'll go broke?
No, it uh, the American Rescue Plan Acts, Rescue Plan Act funding has, has very specific requirements, right? Uh um, uh it actually, um we were planning on, on doing a, a very thorough review of, of, of the ARPA uh, uh, funding and in fact, in, um, in the book, in, in your book.
Page sixteen.
Page sixteen, page sixteen in your book uh has, has uh kind of a, an update, right? An update on, on what, um, what ARPA uh has been, has been uh spent on and what we most importantly uh see it being spent on, so it's.
I, I, I seen it here, I see, uh, but over here it says housing. So housing could be categorized as a homeowner that lives in it, right? It's housing, isn't it? Or is it specific housing for, does it have a specific thing on it that says you have to use it for this type of housing? Because if you're a homeowner, that is housing, you're living in a home, right? Home is housing, so.
Councillor, I just wanna make sure we don't gear off from the budgeting questions?
Yeah, the question is, here it says the money for housing, right?
You're on, yes, but you are on, on the ARPA subject now, right?
He says to go to there, where ARPA money was for.
And the city manager explained there are very strict restrictions as to how we can use ARPA.
But I get, I understand that, but the restrict, see, a home is housing, right? So would that fall under that category, let me, let me rephrase that, would that fall under that category?
If we have time tonight, we, we are ready to do a full update on ARPA, but I, I think if, if you allow us councillor to.
I understand, I understand, I was just wondering.
What do we have to run through?
I understand, I understand, Mr. Fidel, but like, here you said housing, so that would fall under, you know what I mean? Explain to me what housing actually is, if that category will fall under that?
We will happily do that councillor, once we wrap up, a, a, and I think what's left is, is, is very quick. So, so the, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll zip up right through the rest of the categories, if you don't mind.
Sure, sure, go, I have no more question, I just wanted to know that question.
Thank you councillor, thank you city manager. Um we'll, we'll save it for the end and then you guys can check in, just so that we can get through the agenda. Uh councillor, uh we're gonna save it to the end, after the meeting is over, they can check in, we're just gonna get through the rest of the agenda. Exactly, yes, and that's okay, right? Alrighty, councillor Taylor, any questions related to this topic?
Yeah, just the, um, I, I just wanna uh just go over the new position. That's, that's primarily to make sure that we're up to date on all the, on all the reimbursements for grants, right?
That's part of it, yes, so I mentioned some things that we can't keep up with, we're challenged to keep up with because of the lack of available staff.
Have we, have we in the past, um, you know, dropped the ball on some of these things? Has it cost us a certain amount, I mean, how?
Uh it hasn't cost us anything, no, uh they're, they're slow to reimburse uh and sometimes what will happen is when we go for our free cash calculation, they'll be charged against that because it's a deficit that could have been cleared up.
How much would those deficits be? If you, if, I don't know if you have that on the top of your head.
I don't have it handy, but we can provide it, um, four hundred thousand? But based on a twenty-one million dollar free cash allotment, that's, that's not significant in our opinion.
And so, and so besides the grant, what, what else does the um, uh, the new senior financial analyst?
So it would be, it would be compliance, it's uh processing of grant activity directly because the financial analyst doesn't do that now, but the senior financial analyst with greater responsibility could do that. The financial analyst prepares the grants and, and gives it to the assistant auditor or me to enter. So a senior financial analyst would be that person that does the data entry for grant activity. And that would take the, the responsibility away from the assistant auditor and the auditor.
Yeah, I, the reason why I'm asking this is again to in my own head, uh being an executive myself, trying to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna save money through these, through these positions and how.
So it does two things, it shifts some of the workflow from the assistant auditor position, bringing her up for other things and it, it speaks to some of the compliance things that we've had trouble keeping up with.
Yeah, yeah.
We do focus on the most critical things, so they, when I say that there are audit findings that are minor, that's true. There, there's one comment there that talks about stagnant accounts that have been sitting with small balances for more than two years, three years. Clean it up.
So, so I think this whole general thing with not just your department with the budget in general is, is just trying to, trying to clean up, uh you know, an operation that's been, you know, a little, you know, bootstrappy, if I can use that word, if that's an actual word.
I'd like it, bootstrappy.
So, um, and I think that the, the um, uh moving some of the accounts payable to a, a more, you know, decentralized thing where, 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 you know, you've got a, a software doing that, I think is, you know, there's, I think there's a lot of money to be saved and, and things like that where you get away from people and paper and, and, and go to, uh, go, go, use, use the software for, I mean, that's, that's where you gain the, the dollars and cents, so I'm all for that.
Yeah, so, so our plan was to try to, to initiate that in this coming fiscal year as a top priority. And at the same time, what it will do is it allows the ARPA accounts payable position to stand in as the regular accounts payable position while there's training going on with the AP person in the different departments.
I've no questions about the ARPA, I, I got that.
So it helps us for the next year to have that ARPA position there.
Great, thank you, that's all I had was with the new, with, with the new position, thank you very much and.
You're welcome.
And congratulations on the.
Thank you councillor, I appreciate that.
Alright, thank you.
Councillor Tashi?
There are no questions.
Thank you councillor.
Alright, moving on.
Alright, so page two forty-three.
Two forty-three is next, uh which is debt service.
So this is the line that funds the debt that we take on for general obligation bonds. I think it was Monday night when we had the water and sewer division here and we were talking about the debt service for water and sewer and you saw that in the water and sewer departments. This line is for the non-water and sewer CIP borrowings. So building upgrades, fire and police vehicles, DPW equipment, IT equipment, things that are unrelated to water and sewer, you will see here. There are statutes that govern the borrowing terms, there are statutes that govern when, when a project ends, what do you do with it? There are statutes that cover when a project is discontinued, what do you do with it? So all of that is covered under this, this line. The debt service that's shown on page two forty-three for principal is one point seven million, for interest is five hundred and forty-six thousand. The outstanding debt, which isn't shown here, but I'll tell you, is thirteen and a half million on principal and four million on interest. Can I answer any questions about debt?
We'll start with councillor Tashi.
No questions.
Councillor Taylor?
Thank you.
Um I'm just curious as to the interest rate we have to pay.
Uh I don't have.
We haven't had to borrow for a long time, um I, I don't know if the, if the CIP we have to borrow either.
Since we hit, we consistently had twenty million dollars of free cash?
Exactly, exactly, which is the benefit of, of having free cash, right? That it, we don't pay interest on free cash.
But, but in, 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 in harder times, which may be frequent or uh, you know, upon us at some point, um is that, is that just based on whatever the interest rate is, is, is going or how is that? I don't know if that's mandated by gov, the, a government.
Yeah, the, uh, we have a consultant, so, so Hilltop Securities, it, it is a firm that basically handles, you know, well borrowing for most municipalities and they essentially go out to bid, right? So, so they, they package, you know, the loan, uh, uh, and they go out to bid and, and, and uh, we select the, the lowest bidder, so uh, uh.
Is it regu, is it regul, regulated by federal or state?
It's set by the market, so, so it fluctuates, it fluctuates. Uh, I went out to, to borrow, uh, uh, in reading before I came here and, and we got about the three and a half percent, right? Uh, obviously that community is a triple A, uh, uh, bond rated, so the rate is a little better than what we would get, but, but I imagine that it'd be around four percent.
So um one other thing I'd say on that is uh our credit rating is, is pretty good and that also feeds into what the rate would be. and that also feeds into what the rate would be. And speaking back to the, the twenty-five consecutive years of the excellence in financial reporting, that speaks highly of the financial operation as well.
And just from my understanding, it's, it's basically impossible for a municipality to have a triple, triple A rating. Is that correct? No?
No, I mean, Reading has it. It, it's, it's done by S and P, right? So, so it, it's not something we, we, we get.
So what is, what is preventing us from reaching that status?
That's probably a longer conversation, but, but.
Yeah, it's, it's probably my likely guess is disposable income in this community. As the demographics change over time, that may change the factor. But double A is a pretty strong rating.
Just because I, I had been told it would be almost impossible for Chelsea to get to a triple A rating. And so that's, that's my question as to why, as to why. And I didn't know if that was, so you answered my question. Thank you, that's all I've got.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Brown?
No questions or all of that, I just have an experience in France.
You're good. Counselor Vega?
Question, thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
We're ready for the next.
Counselor Sanigay? Okay, let's move right along.
Just say one more thing before we leave this page. I think it was Monday night when, when I T was here, and they were talking about some of the capital projects that were listed in that department. So those are C I P projects that are not in borrowing stages. Those are part of the operating budget. So when you see those in these charts, they are not part of this, this interest rate structure that I just described.
Thank you.
So we'll go to two, two fifty-one, which is, page two fifty-one, which is budget reserve funds.
And I think we had talked about this, uh, when the police department was on, uh, Monday night. So this is the line that is a holding line for the funds that we'd like to put into reserve for the settlement of C B As. There are five unions currently that don't have settlements for fiscal twenty-five. Police patrol, police superiors, firefighters, nine-one-one dispatchers, and nine-one-one supervisors. So basically, what we've done is we've taken a rough percentage of increase on the base salaries and the overtime for those five unions. We've calculated that, that's about nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then we've added another fifty thousand, which is a base reserve of contingency of other smaller salary needs. So if we missed a longevity payment, or somebody gets a step increase that was not planned for, we would go to this line. It's important to note for all of you that this budget reserve line requires council vote of approval for any transfers that are moved out to respective departments. We're not allowed to, to go to this line without the approval of the council.
Thank you, so we will start with.
Can I answer questions here?
Counselor Sanigay? Counselor Robinson? Counselor Vega? Counselor Brown?
Um, why does, why does it deserve, we're speaking of, is this, um, added for?
Could you use the mic for the question?
So, um, to give these numbers here, I know you said you did some multiplication and some overtime to come up with the nine, six thirty-two. Is this for how many employees? Because I know you said you have five.
Yeah, it's the entire, so we go by unions. So the police patrol union will have, I guess, eighty-five patrol officers. Uh, the superiors have thirty. Uh, firefighters are in the ninety-five position range. Dispatches for nine-one-one are fifteen, supervisors one or two.
So, I'm sorry, I, I got that, I'm sorry, thanks. So will this be a one-year appropriation?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, well, we assume so because the, the contracts need to be negotiated. And once they are, the funding for that.
Will have it.
Will come from this line with the council's approval.
Okay, great, thank you, I remember.
Counselor Taylor? Counselor Teshi?
I would just ask how, in, in the past year, twenty twenty-four, it was three, three hundred and five thousand?
Yeah, we only had one union that did not settle. So what's unusual this time is there are five.
And now you said.
And they're larger unions too. So it's, it's, it's better to do it this way and have it in the budget because then when they are settled, you just have a, we cost it out, we know what the exact number is, and then we transfer it, rather than putting money into the department budgets, which are not accurate. And then we need to get council approval to move them out. Uh, we don't favor that approach.
Thank you.
All right. We can move right along, I don't have any questions.
So we'll go to, uh, regional schools. I'm sorry, inter-fund transfers, two fifty-one.
Okay, so the.
I was trying to sneak it through.
Page two, two fifty, inter-fund transfers. There are two lines here. The transfer to capital projects. The city has a parcel on Marginal Street that is occupied by a rental company, a rent, car rental company, vehicle rental company. And this funding is set here by written agreement. There is a written agreement that the city has. I'm not certain of the timing, it was ten years, it may be coming up on renewal, I'm not certain of that, but. And this line funds capital improvements or operational expenses that occur at that parcel. They submit invoices, we review them, we make payments once a year. The flip side of that is that the city receives substantial excise tax revenue from this particular parcel and the occupancy of that parcel. So that's the million two eighty-five. The transfer to trust, there's a three hundred thousand dollar funding for O P E B, other post-employment benefits other than retirement. This is a requirement from the Government Accounting Standards Board that all cities and towns need to have actuarial valuations every two years to cost out what it will be for other post-employment benefits other than retirement. We cost this out, it's funded in the, in the auditing department budget, is one of our consultants. Our O P E B liability from the last report we received in fiscal twenty-three is a hundred and forty million. So that's a huge number, a hundred and forty million. We are contributing three hundred thousand dollars a year currently, and our trust balance is three point eight million. So we have a ways to go with that. The positive side of what we're doing, we have an irrevocable trust that the council had to approve. I think it was two years ago that we established that. And what that means is whatever we put into it stays there. That helps with the rating agencies, and it helps with the audits. What it doesn't help with is drawing, drawing a closure on, on that number. We think the reason we're being asked or told to do this, to cost it out every two years, is that there will be a plan to make us funded, the way that they're doing with the retirement payback. So we'll talk about that in a couple of minutes with the retirement payback. But we have a hundred and forty million dollar liability. We have about four million dollars set aside for that. We don't think we can do more than three hundred thousand dollars a year currently, but we are keeping up with that, and we demonstrate that with the funding agencies. Can I answer questions here?
Counselor Teshi?
No questions.
Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, my, my, my only question would be, why, why is it that we only have three hundred thousand dollars to play with here? Why, why can't we just setting aside more money to, to bring down those big numbers?
What I would say is, the plan has always been, and it's subject to change now, but the plan in the past has been, when the retirement makeup provision ends in twenty twenty-eight.
When we fully fund our retirement liability. We will shift all the money.
Yes.
That we're, we're putting on retirement and, and, and we put it there. I mean, that's been the plan that Tom preached for a long time. It is the plan that, that a lot of communities are on, right? That it's.
I, I understand, I'm just wondering why we're not trying to get ahead of the game.
So that, um.
When we have, when we have money, that's, that's, you know, paying, paying down the debt may be a good thing, you know?
I would say one, one reason is that we're not required to. We are required to fund, to show some, some effort to funding it. To have an irrevocable trust is a, a, a positive for us because obviously, council can't dissolve it and, and transfer it to, to another need. It stays here as part of the O P E B.
I understand that part, I mean, that, that, that part, I think, is good. I'm just wondering why we're, why, why we came up with that number.
Well, we'll have another five million, I think.
If it jives with the twenty twenty-eight and, 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 you know, then we shift all the labor stuff over. That's, that's a good enough answer.
But throughout the state, there are varying degrees of how this is being funded. Some communities are doing it, others that, that are more affluent are doing it completely. Some are not doing it at all. Um, we are, I think, comfortable with what we've done to this point.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
No questions, Madam President.
Counselor Vega, Robinson, and Sanigay. Awesome, moving right along.
Thank you, and now regional schools, uh, page two forty-two.
Okay, so the regional schools, this budget line covers expenses for regional vocational schools that Chelsea students opt to attend. The largest portion of this budget is for Northeast Metro Regional Vocational. Chelsea has the second highest enrollment behind Revere. Revere is two hundred and seventy-six for fiscal twenty-five. We are two hundred and fifty-two for fiscal twenty-five. This budget also has contingency funding for other smaller enrollment schools like Essex North Shore Agricultural. We've got about thirty-eight thousand of this amount dedicated to that smaller school. Uh, one issue that we ran into with Northeast Volk is we didn't have final numbers when it came to putting the budget together. So what we did is we contacted the Director of Finance at Northeast Volk. He gave us an approximate number of two million fifty-three, so two oh five three, which we put in. We didn't have enrollment numbers then, so the number that you see in the book, the two thirty-two, is the prior year. So we now know, a week ago, we got the information from Northeast Volk, we have two hundred and fifty-two students, and the assessment is two zero four zero. So we weren't that far off from our estimate, and we don't need to ask for additional funding. Uh, one other note I'd make on this particular budget is that there was a debt service component to this now because they are reconstructing the school, uh, building a new school. And so the number of nine hundred and seventy-six thousand is included in this two million ninety-two dol, uh, two million ninety-two thousand dollar number. The debt is anticipated to increase to one point six annually starting next year. So that's another thing we need to consider moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Sanigay. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Vega, Counselor Brown? Counselor Taylor, Counselor Teshi?
Overall, two point, um, zero nine million. Is that at all funded through what the school department gets, or is this just coming straight from the city?
Uh, I don't think it's from schools, no.
It is not from schools. It's from our budget. So, um, sorry, was the question, is this paid for by the city side or the school side? It is paid, it, it is paid on the city side.
We get the enrollment information from the school side, however, so it's like.
Does, does the, does our district get money for those students?
So, it, it, that, those numbers are factored into the assessment. So just like the city of Chelsea received chapter seventy funding, Northeast Regional will receive state funding as well. And it's, like, the, the dollar per student that the state gives, and it calculates based on the demographics and the income of this community, would then go to Northeast, and then they adjust the assessment. And that's the final number that you're receiving, plus whatever capital that's required.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you, no other questions, we can move on.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to next one, retirement contributions on page two forty-six.
Okay, so this budget line covers expenses for the city's pension obligation assessment from P A R A C. The city's appropriation is ten point two million. The schools and the housing authority are separately assessed, so they're not part of this assessment that you see. This, um, twenty twenty-eight, I mentioned earlier on the O P E B that in twenty twenty-eight, the costs will drop because the catch-up provision or makeup provision will be fully funded by then. So we anticipate at that point that another five to six million dollar surplus will be utilized to redirect to the O P E B if we choose to do that.
And we will. It's the right thing to do.
Okay, questions from the council?
Thank you. And last, we'll go to state assessments, page two forty-four.
I'm sorry, can we do one more thing? Uh, nine forty-seven, so page two forty-three?
Yes, yes.
That wasn't in the list, I missed that. I'm, I'm sorry, councils, if I could ask you to turn to page two forty-nine. That's not on your list, I missed that, and I should have included it. But if you recall from Patrice Montefusco's presentation last night, there was talk about a Bank of America lease arrangement that was for the collection of energy, um, construction of infrastructure for that. This line is for that purpose. We cannot call this a debt obligation because there is an escrow agent involved, and it's technically not our money because we have to ask for it to be released to us in portions. And so as a result, the D O R has advised us to fund it this way, outside of debt. So this two fifty-one is the number that we will be paying for principal and interest in twenty-five. We have a fifteen-year repayment on that, and I think there's a balloon payment coming, of course, next year when everything else happens. Can I answer questions here?
No questions.
All right. So now we'll go to state assessments, page two forty-four.
Thank you.
That is the last one.
Yeah, so this line covers state assessments and other state charges for expenses from regional services provided, typically M B T A, mosquito controls, charter schools. It's, uh, coming from what they call the cherry sheets, most of us are familiar with that. These are the governor's numbers, which is what we have when we created the budget.
Questions? No? Counselor Cooper?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
I know the M B T A assessment right up there. That's what we pay the M B T A for them to run their buses here?
It's, um, so when, when, when the governor releases the cherry, the, the, the budget, right? Uh, we, um, each city and town gets a cherry, a cherry sheet which shows how much we will get, but then it shows how much they will take away from what we get, right? So, so it, it, it's a net balance. We, uh, every community pays into the M B T A. That's, that's how it works. But, but it, it ultimately is offset from what we're given by the government.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that concludes our F Y twenty twenty-five budget hearings.
I'm glad to have been last, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you, city manager, our deputy managers, for all your work on this. Um, and thank you to my colleagues for making the last day as smooth as possible. All right. Meeting adjourned.